Good morning. I will call to October 21st agenda meeting briefing open. Nine o'clock called order is Barbara Acoff, invocation by Commissioner Joe Daughtry. Pledge allegiance by Commissioner Antonia Williams, who is absent. Approval minutes, motion to approve the October 7th, 2025 minutes. Discussion of agenda, adjustment of agenda. Do we have any adjustments?
No adjustments.
Okay. Special presentations, employee anniversary pins. Motion to approve the 2025 first responded day in Wayne County proclamation as presented by Fire Marshal Ryan Taylor. Presentation by Saving Union Station, Representative Julie Metz and Doug McGrath. Public hearing to receive public comments on economic development agreement between Wayne County and the Wayne County Development Alliance to construct 250,000 square foot shell buildings on lot 7A at the Park East Industrial Park. Board of Commissioners may choose to action following public hearing. Anybody have any questions on anything so far? Consent agenda, late disabled veterans exemption application, late elderly disabled exemption applications, late present use value applications, late property tax exemption, and budget amendments. Ms. Angie. Good morning.
Morning.
Budget amendments.
I'm sorry. Somebody. All right, we're going to start with budget amendment number 124. This is from Finance. Purpose of this budget amendment is to realign payroll line items to cover the health savings account employer contributions for various departments. Number 127 is from the Health Department. This budget amendment is to realign grant funding from the opioid settlement funds from August 1st, 2025. These funds will be used towards salary infringement for the temporary full-time public health education specialist position in recovery support services. Number 128. The purpose of this budget amendment from Services on Aging is to appropriate the increase in the Family Caregiver Support Program funds allocated for the 25, 26 fiscal year. Number 133 is for the Health Department. This budget amendment is to realign the health budget for nursing bonus payments for new hire and employees change of position. Number 134. This budget amendment is to appropriate the 25, 26 fiscal year funding for wages. Number 138 from Department of Social Services. This budget amendment is to reallocate budgeted payroll funds for the health savings account employer contributions. Number 140 from Wayne County Development Alliance. This budget amendment is needed to appropriate Development Alliance contingency funds to cover the cost of the final survey plan for Ivy Drive. All grant funds have been allocated for the project and fully expended, and this was the final step required to complete and record the project. And the final budget amendment. The purpose of this budget amendment is to realign funds to pay the salary infringement benefits for the juvenile crime prevention lead-in structure from the detention center budget. This will reduce the position count for detention by one and increase the sheriff position count by one in hopes of receiving a grant in the future to fund this position and returning the position back to detention. So this is a temporary move of positions. That is all that I have, unless you have questions.
No, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. Andrew, just a technical question. Budget Amendment 134 for wages. Would me serving on their board and serving as the board president, do I need to recuse myself from that vote anyway?
No, you would be fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, moving along. The 2026 holiday schedule. Motion to give corrective extension approval to apply for the voluntary agriculture district ag plan grant and the farmers market ag development grant.
Just.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning. So these are two different grants, but they're under the same umbrella. The North Carolina Department of Agriculture, under the agriculture development and farmland preservation offers multiple grants. I will be applying for two. One is under the VAD ag plan, and it is to help provide, it will help provide signs for those who sign up for VAD. So it's a $7, up to $7,500 grant, so that's what that will take care of. So anybody that applies for the VAD, if we get that grant, they'll get a free sign.
Would that be at their, like their main, I say their office or their form, or is it each individual form? The sign, the sign is just for the, like it.
At the main form.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What a beautiful kind.
Yep, so normally they would have to pay for the sign. This would, this grant would cover that. The second one is an ag development grant, is still under the ADFP for North Carolina Department of Agriculture, and it is a farmer's market grant, and this is to provide money for events, for educational events at the farmer's market to help with things like, the things we're doing for the Christmas event. We could do spring events, fall events, different things like that. It's kind of what we're encompassing in this grant, if we're able to apply, so.
So all we got to do is give blessings and you apply. So how about the status on the other grant? Is it, just don't know anything?
We don't know anything yet with the shutdown.
Oh, that's right.
Yep, it might be a while.
Any questions? More questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number 14. Motion to approve two farm leases on properties jointly owned with the City of Goldsboro for a period not to exceed eight years as requested by the City of Goldsboro.
This is a request that was sent over by the city. I believe it was on their agenda last night. There are a handful of properties that we jointly own that we lease out for farm leases. We do this on our side just for county-owned property, and traditionally for the jointly owned with the city and the county, the city initiates the bid process for these leases. So they, the leases that we, that are jointly owned were up for bid, and so they went out for bid, and you can see the bid amounts. There are two farmers that cover one, two, three, four, five different parcels, so there's only two leases that you need to approve. The leases are for five years with the option to renew for an additional one-year period for three additional years, so up to eight years.
Andrew, how do we acquire this property? I mean, is it through tax foreclosure or?
Most of them are.
Clean Water Trust Fund. It was funded through the Clean Water Trust Fund.
Oh, okay.
Act, through the base protection of the base.
Some of the ones that we list out, lease out on our side are FEMA properties too, so it's a mix of both.
Yeah, it was in accident potential zones for Seymour Johnson.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, prevent development from occurring.
Is the amount on these per acre leases compatible with, comparable to what we have been leasing out on other properties?
I'd have to look and see what we lease out. It looks like the bids are the same. They, the farmers basically bid the same amount of what they're paying right now. I think ours may be a little bit higher than this, but.
I know this one was 156. What was that at? And then some 73, 50.
I think ours are in the hundreds, if I recall. But it's been about two years, I think, since we leased ours out, since we bid ours out.
We never take into account profitability of the souls, because you know some souls are more profitable than others for a farmer.
And I tell you, the city has approved this already.
It was on their agenda last night, so I assume it was approved. I don't know that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions? Number 15. Motion to adopt Resolution 2025-34. A resolution adopting the 52nd Amendment to the Position, Classification, and Pay Plan for Wayne County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There was an error on the pay plan. For environmental health, there is a supervisor one, a supervisor two, and a manager. But on our pay plan, it was listed as supervisor one, manager, and then supervisor two. This is a correction to fix that error.
Did you just put it on the wrong line? I see it's kind of reversed.
Mm-hmm, it was reversed. But that's the only correction we have. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, new business. Number 16. Policy proposal, accrued leave conversion for supplemental service credit towards retiree health benefit eligibility. Angie?
Should it stay up here? That is a very large title, but I just like to call it Bridge to Retirement. As you guys know, I'm constantly in our, in our policies to make sure that we're offering our employees the best that we can offer them and remain fiscally responsible as well. So basically what this does is allows those employees that are within two years of retirement at a 25-year mark who would otherwise meet the eligibility to remain on our insurance to go ahead and be a little bit more flexible and strategic in the way that they plan to retire. It gives us the ability to convert any accrued leave into a service credit to go ahead and allow them to exit around the 23-year mark if they so choose. It could be a, you know, not necessarily 23-year mark, as early as a 23-year mark. We would cap it at two years of service credit. I don't think I'm doing a good job explaining exactly what this does, but basically it helps employees within two years of retirement meet the 25-year service requirement for retiree health benefits.
And it only applies to those employees that qualify for that benefit, which was prior to 2009.
Okay, that's the question I was going to ask, because it says help employees. It doesn't specify which employees.
So it applies only to employees hired before 7/1/2009. It will require them to give us a 120-day notice of retirement. They have to be in good standing with the county. The conversion is capped at two years, and applies only to retiree health eligibility. It has no impact to pension calculations.
I thought in the past that we would not allow that.
We haven't allowed it in the past. That's why I'm asking to allow it now.
Well, I think there was a reason why we didn't want to allow that. I mean, you're setting a precedent that's pretty substantial there. What's your take on that?
I would recommend putting it in place. It will help us save money and help bridge some people to retire early.
So tell me the people this will affect, round figures.
So right now, we have about 40 people who would be eligible if they so chose to utilize this benefit. I do not anticipate that most of those people want to. There are a lot of people who want to stay around for 30 years. But there are some people who are sitting in positions, ready to retire, and are only sticking around to meet a timeline. And in those cases, I think that this is a good option for those employees who have been responsible with their time, have allowed their time to accrue over the years, have this bucket of time that we will be used to convert to allow them to go ahead and retire. Because the only reason they're sitting in this position is to meet the 25-year mark so that they can get their insurance.
And as long as they stay, they get paid.
The higher their salaries are.
Which is going to actually be more, costs us more in the long run for retirement.
Now, this doesn't, just so, you know, and we've all kind of looked at this. It does not, it does not cost, this is a non-monetary benefit. They've already earned that, that pot of money, or that pot of time, excuse me. They've already earned it. We're just allowing them to use it in a different way.
All right, so let me make sure I understand this. Let's just say that they went the entire 25 years. If they retired at the 25 year, would we have to pay for that time?
We have to pay up to 240 hours of it. What we normally do is any vacation time in excess of 240 hours, we roll into their sick time, and then the sick time rolls into their pension at the state level. So what we would do instead.
God, you're confusing me this morning early. I'm just saying, am I understanding that if a person retires at 25, any of their accrued vacation time and sick time that they would have, we would actually have to pay for them?
No, we don't pay it.
So if you are not paying it now, and you allow that to be credited for time so they can retire earlier, would not that actually cost us?
It doesn't cost us, it doesn't cost us either way. It's just a different way of using that time.
That goes in local government retirement, right?
Right.
Yeah, credits are, yeah.
So that time gets rolled over, we don't do anything with it. It just, it goes over to the North Carolina retirement system. So this is just a different way of allowing them to use that time. Instead of it rolling over into their retirement at the state level, we would remove those hours. Let's say they have 4,000 hours they want to use toward credit. We would take those hours and freeze them. Those hours now belong to us. They get deducted from their accruals. They can take whatever's left over and still roll it over at the state level, but we've deducted that time from them, and that allows them to go ahead and leave it 23 years instead of 25 years.
So is there anything in place that they can take their time anytime they want to? They can burn up the X amount of time? So I mean, they could basically.
Has to be with supervisor approval.
Yeah. But this is another way of allowing employees to use it. And another example is what I call, from the military side, we call terminal leave. So an employee could take that time, let's say they've got six months of time used up, or not, or saved up, and they want to use it before they retire. So they're going to go on leave and burn up their time that we do have to pay before they go into, you know, into full retirement.
So we'll have a position with nobody sitting in it, somebody sitting in it, but not a person there to do the work?
Right.
With supervisor approval.
Well, this definitely seems to be a little bit above my pay grade in regards to personnel matters, so I'm going to defer to the recommendation of the county manager. County manager recommends that we approve it?
If you approve it.
If you recommend it, then so be it.
Any other questions? I know this is kind of a confusing deal, but.
You said it doesn't apply to their pension, just gives, kind of like I did with the state. I had over two years of sick leave that I accrued with the state, and I applied that toward my retirement, which gave me 30 years, 30-plus years of service. But of course, the state has a little different where that continued to count toward my pension and my years of service. But in this case, 25 years is the service that we're looking at.
That's the service requirement that we're looking at, yep. And there are two distinct, different policies. This would only apply to county policy. It would not have, it has no effect at all on the.
And it's just for basically those 40 people.
Forty people.
And then after that, it's really, doesn't really, because you're not going to.
You had to be an employee before July 1st.
So after those 40 have retired, really this policy's.
Wouldn't apply anymore.
Exactly.
What do we do now for those that were employed after 2009?
About 100 employees that total that could qualify in the future.
They just hadn't entered 25, yeah.
But we don't, but they're not going to get the.
If they get.
So are they, were they here before, those 100 are here before 2009? Okay.
We do an actuarial every year as required for our audit. It's called OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, and that is booked as a liability on our financial statements. If we had to pay that out all at one time, so it tracks the number of employees.
So we got 40 people today.
Today.
That could do it.
Yes.
So long-term, we've got 100-ish.
118, I believe, when I last checked.
So after the 118, this policy's pretty much.
It falls off.
It wouldn't apply to anybody.
So 25 and nine is 34, 2034. Yep.
If you have.
118 is a little different.
And remember, you're going to pay those 100 anyway if they stay here. There are time requirements, so you're not adding anything.
But it's 118 total with that 40 included into it, not 158, it's 118 period, okay.
If a person elects to retire before 25 years of service, does that affect their pension amount? So if someone elected to use the time at 23 years of service to get 25, they're actually going to lose in the end when they retire.
So this would be, it could be, yeah, it could. It depends on, you know, there's a lot of.
They have to make that decision. They have to weigh an early retirement benefit versus.
I understand. I have no, I have no problem with it, understanding how it works, and I'll take your recommendation to the county commissioner.
It's just a flexibility option for our loyal employees. I mean, they've been around for a really long time. A lot of them are very, you know, responsible with their accrued leave. There's no reason to just, you know, make them sit in a seat when they're, when they're ready. They're ready.
So that they're responsible employees too. You don't burn that PTO.
Yep, they save it up all this time and gives them, gives them the option to figure out how they want to do it.
I think younger people have that problem.
For new employees that are hired after 2009, how do we work their time of service or accrued leave? There's nothing for them.
I hope, I hope to be able to change that in the future, but right now, this is where we're at.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I would say this. When we have something that dramatic or that involved, I'd like to get a little bit more heads up on that before it's actually brought before the board for a vote, so that we have a little bit more time to ask questions and get more information.
Well, we can remove it from the agenda today.
No, no, I'm good. I mean, I defer to your judgment on this, but in the future, we can just have a little bit more time to explore, because this is pretty far-reaching, and just to bring it up on the, at this time and then vote on it in the future, it makes more sense that we have a little bit more time to digest it. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Number 17. Discussion of requests from the Wayne County Board of Education to purchase 56 acres of land to join in Brogdon Primary School. Board of Commissioners may take action following the discussions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move we go into closed session for discussion on acquisition of property.
All right, I have a motion going closed session.
And may I also add, in addition to that, because I had something else, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body to reserve attorney-client privilege, if you can add that as well.
So add it.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And to real, acquisition of property.
I call the October 21st, 2025 Agenda meeting open. Impeachment will be Commissioner Daughtry.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for bringing us together this day to serve the people of Wayne County. As we begin this meeting, we ask your presence As we begin this meeting, we ask your presence to guide our thoughts, our words, and our actions. Grant each commissioner wisdom and judgment to make decisions that will promote the good of our citizens. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve October 21st, 2025 minutes?
Say my name.
Have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Acock. Motion passed six zero. Item number two, motion to approve the October 21st, 2025 adjusted agenda. Do we have adjustments?
No adjustments.
Okay.
Move we approve the agenda?
All right, Commissioner.
All right, we'll have our employee anniversary pin presentation.
All right, as they get ready, when we call your name, please come after you receive your gift, come around here and stand so we can get a picture afterwards. All right, we ready, Ginger? All right, beginning with our one-year service pins, Andrea Goodson with Animal Control, Stephen Martin with Facility Services, Melissa Melrose with EMS, Blake Underwood with EMS, Wayne Keys with Facility Services, Sienna Lostel with EMS, Justin Parks, Animal Control, and Shonda Reed with the Tax Office. You finally didn't pump me. That concludes our one year. All right, now we'll move to our five-year service pins. And we'll begin with Sherri Strickland, Public Health, Austin Sutton with Animal Control, Joseph Lamb EMS, Milton Pollak EMS, Ethan Crom Detention Center, Holly Sutton, Tax Department. That concludes our five-year service pin recipients. All right, now we'll move to our 10-year recipients, beginning with Jennifer Heath, Day Reporting Center, Kelsey Rogers EMS, John Love, Information Technology, Lisa Scarborough, Detention Center. Thank you, John. That's it for our 10-year recipients. And for our 15-year, we'll begin with Jeff Hood with the Sheriff's Office, Tyler Santaford EMS. All right, thank you, Jeff. That's it for our 15-year. And our last award recipient, but not our least, Maritza Ball with Public Health Maternity Care Coordinator, 25 years of service. All right, that's it. Thank you all. If you'll, Commissioner stand behind him and Joel will let us know that he's got in the picture. Just kind of look up there if you will. And he usually says he has it. Got it. All right, thank you all very much.
Item number four would be our motion to approve the 2025 First Responders' Day in Wayne County proclamation. It's presented by Fire Marshal Brian Taylor.
He's actually not here to say he was good.
Gary will stand in for him. Welcome, Gary.
Whereas Wayne County first responders, both men and women, career and volunteer from 911 telecommunications, law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, search and rescue teams, divers, emergency management professionals, and members of other organizations in the public safety sector, are our family members, neighbors, friends, church members, and coworkers who are trained to come together to protect and aid the public in the event of an emergency. Whereas Wayne County first responders risk their lives and safety every day in the performance of their duties to protect our citizens. And whereas at a moment's notice, first responders are quick to respond to dangerous and uner- and unerbing situations that threaten our communities. Whereas first responders must be ready to provide life-saving services to the people of Wayne County 24 hours a day throughout the year. And whereas first responders undergo significant education, specialized training, and personal sacrifice to contribute their excellency, their excellent and necessary skills. And whereas we recognize the integral role first responders play in our communities and the benefits derived from their hard work, commitment, sacrifice, and unhesitating dedication. And whereas Wayne County first responders have responded to, witnessed, and assisted in tragedies, heartbreaks, helplessness, and disbelief that went unrecognized. And whereas Wayne County first responders do not have the ability to change the course of an event, but their skills and compassion help make situations better. And whereas Wayne County First Responders' Day recognizes the heroic men and women serving our county who make it their business to take immediate action when disaster strikes. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim October 28th, 2025 as National First Responders' Day in Wayne County and pay special tribute to the family members of our Wayne County first responders for their untold sacrifices and the support they give daily to ensure the safety of our community.
And that is in the form of a motion.
Yes, motion to approve the First Responder Day in Wayne County proclamation. Commissioner Acock. Thank you for all y'all did to.
That passed. Okay, thank you all for that. Next, item number five is a presentation by Saving Union Station, Representatives Julie Metz and Doug McGrath.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Thanks for allowing us this time today to be with you, to share some updates about the Saving Union Station efforts and about anything related, actually, to Union Station and Southeastern Passenger Rail. It's been a while since we were here before you, asking for your participation in a crucial partnership to stabilize one of our most historic landmarks in our county, and that is Goldsboro's Union Station, with an effort to save it so it has a future use. That was back in December of 2023. It's been a long time, but I assure you, I know a lot of people have been asking, you know, what is going on? They don't see anything happening. But I assure you, a lot has happened, and that's why I'm here today to, to share some of that information with you. Today I have two of our Saving Union Station team members. It's a small group that work together almost weekly. We see each other, have meetings to discuss next steps, what's going on, who needs to do what. That's Doug McGrath, one of the founding members, and then John Peacock, because John Peacock has joined our team as well. Mark Messler could not be here today, but he is also, if you'll remember, part of the original group. As a refresher, let's see, this is not working. There you go. As a refresher, a local, small group of volunteers, Doug, Mark, and myself, as well as some of our friends, came before you, called our Saving Union Station team. And we created a plan to save Union Station by securing funding to conduct some necessary stabilization work to ensure the building had a future for an unknown new use and additional investment for a complete rehabilitation at a later date. We worked with the NCDOT Rail Division to identify a budget based on the building's most critical needs. And the budget that was arrived at is a one and a half million dollars. We committed to securing half of that if the county and the city would equally contribute to the remaining half. Each of you voted unanimously to approve that plan. We want to thank you again for that. We would like to spend a couple of minutes reviewing the milestones and actions led, at least in part, by the SUS team from that date in December, and then also talk about some next steps moving forward. Also have updates about the stabilization work that the city is engaging in now, and also some NCDOT and USDOT updates as well. After our meetings in November and December of 2023, the SUS team immediately went to work. We went down to the station with some of our friends, local friends, different companies throughout Wayne County that were interested in the project and willing to help. And we assessed kind of where we were with water damage and drainage that was causing some most dire issues. I could thank, stand here and thank a lot of different companies, but most importantly, I want to thank Lauren and Mark Messler. They contributed about $40,000 worth of professional services and time to, to clean up the property and rearrange the drainage so it wasn't causing further damage. In May, our efforts, I actually skipped too fast. In May, our efforts were, were recognized and featured in the WRAL story, where we were able to share the upcoming Saving Union Station Day that we held June 4th, where lots of dignitaries, regional and state, came out to, to learn more about what our Saving Union Station team was doing and what is going on at the DOT level, continuing the interest with Southeastern Passenger Rail Route connecting Raleigh to Wilmington. In September, an independent study conducted for NCDOT was released, stating that the Southeastern Passenger Rail Route connecting Wilmington to Raleigh through Goldsboro passed the feasibility test, allowing this project to proceed to a federal level of further study and potential funding by way of getting a corridor ID. Later in 2024, the city initiated the use of its $375,000 it committed for stabilization of the most immediate needs in a Phase One of the project. That project required us to help with a solicitation of an RFQ, and we helped the SUS team help draft that for them. The remaining of the year, we also started to prep for an upcoming grant that we knew was coming, that we would be eligible to apply for Union Station. And so we started working on that in late 2024. In 2025, we kicked off really early. The RFQ was done. We issued that January 2nd with the city's help. And then shortly after the North Carolina Department of Commerce's grant was due, we prepared the application pro bono. The DGDC provided the 5% required match, which was $37,500. The city was kept abreast of this effort and was supportive of it because, as a grant requirement, the funds had to go through a local government entity. Although they did not apply for the grant, they did not provide the match. It was a SUS effort 100%. After the grant application was submitted, the D, the Department of Commerce required us to also go through a NEPA process to be able to be eligible and gain the grant. And the SUS team did that also pro bono and, and put that effort in so we could be eligible and secure that grant. Because of that, the State Historic Preservation Office will have to be involved in every process of the design phases because it is a historic landmark. A team was selected to review responses to the RFQ. Members of the SUS team, the city, and the NCDOT Rail Division were part of that team. And a unanimous decision to further engage with TA Loving was made. On February 24th, we learned that our grant application received a total eligible, based on the amount of jobs we would retain in that area, of $612,500. It was noted in a written statement by the Assistant Secretary Kenny Flowers at the time that "the unique and strong partnership among the state and local governments, nonprofit Main Street organization, and the private sector played a significant role in the grantor's decision, as well as the historical significance of the building." And finally, as of just a couple of weeks ago, the City of Goldsboro staff recommended City Council's approval to enter into the contract with TA Loving. And as of last night, the City Council authorized the city to contract with TA Loving. So we had our initial kickoff meeting yesterday, and then we'll have a more comprehensive kickoff meeting in November 4th, I believe is the date that was set as of yesterday. I want to go a little bit, that gets us to where we are today. I want to go a little bit over what you can expect to see at 101 North Carolina Street, starting in the next couple of weeks, kind of share our current fundraising activities and where we stand with that. And also, like I said, share some recent state and federal updates related to the Southeastern Passenger Rail Route. First of all, here we go with the Phase One of the, of the work TA Loving is doing. As you remember, this is a one and a half million dollar project. We only have $375,000 in play right now. So we're considering this Phase One. And because of the critical nature of the building, the historic integrity of the building, there's a lot of things that we don't know what we're gonna find when we start, you know, going in the field and discovering things. So we're, we're approaching this phase as a design build. They're gonna go in there, they're gonna do the exploration. They have a good design team that has a lot of experience in, in historic preservation. So they're, they're gonna address the most immediate needs. Most of this is gonna be weatherization kind of issues, getting the building tight, making sure water's not creating any more damage. And then they'll, as permitting will allow, they'll, they'll design, they'll permit, they'll construct, they'll design, permit, construct, if permitting is, is necessary for whatever that step is. So there's gonna be a lot of incremental in this Phase One, just to get started. I'm not gonna go all over all of the design services and the attention, the priorities that are in this Phase One, but just to share that that's kind of the approach, and that's what they're gonna be concentrating on beginning in, in November. Also, I just wanted to share that with you, who is on the team. So we are confident that we have the right design builder team. Of course, we have TA Loving. We have Architect Michael Graves and Company out of Winston-Salem, consultants Cox, Edwards, McLachlan Engineering, and W. H. Prudin III and Contracting Manning Masonry with our friends, of course, at the State Historic Preservation Office. And the North Carolina Rail Division are also involved. So this is our schedule. As I shared, we have the kickoff meeting. We had a preliminary kickoff meeting yesterday, since I was in town, and then we're gonna have a more comprehensive one in November, on November 3rd, I believe it is. And I've kind of shared already how that's gonna take place. It's gonna be just in small bits, design, build, design, build. It's, we're not gonna try to design it all at one time and then construction, construct it. The design, I think, if I remember correctly from the documents that I saw yesterday, is gonna cost about $153,000 in this Phase One. We wanted to make sure we had some funds to actually do some construction and address those immediate needs so we can secure the building. So here we are with the fundraising update. As you remember, one and a half million dollars is our budget. That's our need to address the most immediate needs. The City of Goldsboro, as I shared, has put their $375,000 into play. It's active now. We are using that. We just, we received a $612,500 grant. We have that. The DGDC contributed $37,500, which was required as part of the match. We raised $11,100, probably more in the last week or two in donations. And as you all remember, the Commissioners committed to contributing $375,000 as well once our team, the Saving Union Station team, reaches our $750,000 goal. We are approximately about $89,000 short. As many of you are keenly aware, I think, we have lost some great community leaders in a relatively short amount of time who dedicated a lot of their time, energy, and passion to see Union Station saved. passion to see Union Station saved and to secure the southeastern passenger rail route through Goldsboro. Many of these leaders gave over two decades of their time to this vision, including David Quick, Sandy Corson, Al King, Chuck Allen, and most recently Jimmy Edmondson. I worked alongside each of them and knew their passion for this. But I don't think any of these men had as much passion for both of the pieces of the puzzle to the vision, that is, Union Station and the passenger rail route, as did Judge Charlie Gaylor. With the blessing of the Gaylor family, the SUS team is working to close that $89,000 gap in Charlie's honor. Once the funds are raised, we commit to planting a hackberry tree at the station at his house. We are currently holding the remaining funds secured to date, which is $661,000, until we can close that $89,000 gap, because we want to have only two phases. We don't want to continue to have phases. It's not very efficient or effective to have unknown when TA Loving can stage and whatever. So we're holding the funds that we have until we close that $89,000 gap. We can come before you and share that we have fully committed to what we said we were going to do and request that you release that $375,000 so we can do just one additional phase to keep TA Loving moving and get the project completed as soon as possible. I do think it's worth mentioning that if you added up all the pro bono work, the professional services that the SUS team has done to dates, it's 2003 or 2023, myself, Mark Metzler, the time that Doug has gone into it, we would be able to close that gap, just in current services. But we are not going to ask you to do that. We want cash in hand. We want all of the funds that we need to go exactly to the project. So anyway, we hope to have the remaining gap completed by March, the end of March of 2026. This slide is really designed for the city because I gave the same presentation to them last night, so I will skip through that. But updates from NCDOT, I talked to Jason Myers, Craig Newton, just last week, just to get some updates so I could share with you. As already mentioned, in September 2024, NCDOT completed that southeastern North Carolina passenger rail feasibility study. And if you haven't read it, I just want to quote one small excerpt from the executive summary. It says, "The recommended route for the Raleigh to Wilmington service is the eastern route as opposed to the western route through Fayetteville that connects Raleigh to Wilmington and passes through six counties. The route is approximately 134 miles long. Although station locations have not been determined, cost estimates and ridership forecasts were prepared, assuming the route would include stops in Wilmington, Goldsboro, Selma, Clayton, Raleigh, and two additional stops to determine later. The route will be pursued through the Federal Railroad Administration's Corridor Identification and Development Program," end quote. This was an independent study conducted for NCDOT in the first step to getting into the Federal Railroad Administration's Corridor ID program, which is akin to getting into a funding pipeline or a capital improvement plan. Step one of the Corridor ID program develops a scope for the service development plan and is currently under review by NCDOT right now. They expect to have that review completed by the end of this month, at which time they will turn it over to the Federal Railroad Administration for their review and approval. And then they expect the FRA, of course, the government shutdown might be affecting the schedule, but they expect the FRA to have time to review it and send back any comments that they have about the scope that is proposed by the end of November, maybe end of December. So that means that we would be ready for Step Two, probably in early January of 2026. NCDOT, at that time, will be required to obtain operating agreements between CSX and the North Carolina Railroad Company, and they will also have to have in place funding agreements between the impacted local governments along the corridor. Now, I found this somewhat alarming, so I'm sharing what I know, and this is information that is going to change, I suspect, a little bit over time. But when I learned that we were going to have to have a 10% match, where the local governments along the corridor are going to have to provide 10% of the cost of this plan, the plan will take three years to conduct. They expect it to be concluded at the end of 2029. And the price tag for the plan as of now, based on the scope that is being considered, is about $6.5 million. So it's 10% match for the local government. Now, I don't know how.
Six and a half million or billion?
Million, six and a half million. And that's shared across a collective of all the local governments within that corridor. It's not just on one. But there's apparently going to be a 10% match. When I shared my concern, just working in local government as long as I have, that this is mid-budget cycle, you know, and all of that, the state is aware of that. They're working through ideas as to how to resolve this situation so they can expedite this Step Two process. So stay tuned. I would just recommend that you, if you don't already have some communication with the Rail Division or NCDOT on a regular basis, that you maybe start doing that so you can be a little bit more prepared when that comes down the pipeline.
So let me make sure I understand, there are 10% to six and a half million, or is 10% of the six and a half million?
10% of the six and a half million is what the local match is going to be. And I don't know how they're going to figure that out, like, you know, Wallace versus Raleigh, Goldsboro versus Wilmington, like, how, you're going to have to come up with some type of formula, I guess, for it to be fair. So I don't, I don't know. I don't think they know what they're going to do yet with that. So anyway.
And what is the six and a half million dollars for?
It's for the Step Two, it's actually for the Corridor Development Services Plan.
But that's not going to restore the tracks that are missing in Castileine?
It's not going to do any construction, but it's going to come up with a plan to do all of that.
So that's just the plan?
Basically, your construction and service delivery plan. Yeah. That's about all I can answer with that. I mean, I just learned that last week, just because I was talking, I was sharing that I had an opportunity to give an update and if they had any information to share. I also just recently learned, I was contacted by Councilmember Brandy Matthews about the same time that Mayor Gaylor forwarded an email from Chairwoman Acock about a new federal rail administration grant that has been revamped, I suspect, to help inner-city passenger rail projects. I attended a webinar, a virtual webinar, last week to learn a little bit more about it. It's a potential grant for us to pursue. The state is going to be going after a project. They did not share which project. We would be eligible for Union Station, however, I don't think it's extremely competitive. I think it's going to go towards inner-city passenger rail projects that are already in play. But anyway, I shared that with the city to keep an eye on that. It does, the good news is that I do think that there appears to be more grant programs gearing up for rail implementation and improvements. So a lot of people are concerned that the government, the federal government, is not funding these kind of programs anymore, but that is actually not the case at all. The build grant is expected to be coming out this fall again in November and probably with more funding than ever. So transportation infrastructure is one of the priorities of this administration, and I see those fundings continue.
We are supporting building the tracks for freight.
Absolutely. Freight, whenever you put passenger rail in, the freight lines will be improved as part of that process. Yeah.
I just hadn't heard anything about freight. It's all passenger disaster.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mean to dismiss the importance of that. The freight rail is extremely important. It's just that they are there now, passenger is not. But when the passenger rail is created, it will improve the infrastructure for the freight rail as well. Next steps, I just want to share, of course, we plan to close our funding gap and raise that $89,000 so we can have that one and a half million dollar budget needed so we can complete all the stabilization work that's required to save the building. And I will share that, I don't know if you're aware, but the city is planning an event to be held April 11th of 2026. It's kind of a, it's a look back at what we used to call Deraileration Event to honor 1926, when we were a little ornery and we ripped up the tracks in the center of Center Street. This time, it's going to be a little bit of a refocus. We're not going to call it Derailibration. It's going to be something along celebrating rail. We're going to have NCDOT passenger rail partners being part of it. We're working on some really exciting engagement opportunities, but I can't share yet because we haven't gone through all the approval processes. But I think the event will be a good one, and I know the planning committee has got some great ideas for that to come. And since I have to share that last night, I stood before the city council, they're the owner of the building, and I said, since there are no immediate specific plans for Union Station, we felt, we feel it's very prudent for them to start to explore next step options and opportunities. And we asked the city last night to consider doing an exercise and creating a document and soliciting it as an expression of interest document, just to see if there are any other opportunities out there for the building, whether it's a private sector, a joint partnership between a public sector and a private sector. I think there is a lot more opportunities. Nobody is just aware of it. So I suggested that they start thinking along those lines, just to see what might be available to benefit not just the building, but the community from an economic development standpoint. We also encouraged Goldsboro last evening to participate in CPACE. It's a new funding mechanism. It's a new incentive for economic development in North Carolina. Some significant investors have created a pool of funds that will help with economic development by way of environmental improvements to buildings, whether it's new construction or rehabilitation. It's a long-term, low-interest loan to private investors. This would be a great tool, not just for Union Station to add to their incentive toolbox, but to many other properties and economic development interests within the county. So they're going to consider that. They all, of course, have the historic preservation tax credits at their disposal, as well as the landmark status ability, as you all helped us do with the Patrick Riley Projects, where we saved six historic buildings in downtown a couple of years ago. But like I said, we also, we asked the city, it's time for you to really get serious and internally consider, you know, ask the tough questions. Do we have a use for this building? Do we have the means and the commitment to maintain such an essential and sensitive historic building, let alone rehab it? Are there any other options? And like I shared, I think there are, but it's, we encourage them to start getting serious about thinking about this because we don't want to be here 10 years again and in the same situation. And lastly, as you all know, securing the southeastern passenger rail route, which will improve the freight rail corridor between Wilmington and Raleigh, will take a force equal to that at the Highway 70 corridor and other significant investments that cross jurisdictional and party lines. We need to be intentionally and strategically engaged in those conversations and develop and maintain partnerships that foster that momentum, resulting in funding. We encourage each of you to get involved in this process, perhaps remembering all those who created this path for us and worked hard to make it our reality. So I guess the bottom message is, I mean, I think at the state and federal level, it's getting more active, and it's going to require us to be more active and engaged, just to make sure we're not missing an opportunity and that we have a chance for sharing, you know, what our needs are and those being heard and considered. So I'll close for questions, but I do want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, when we came before you in 2023 and we started the SUS team, you know, we have Doug and myself and John who communicate on a weekly basis and are involved in the day-to-day activities of whatever is required of us. But we also have some really good heavy-hitter supporters that were with us in the very beginning, that we wouldn't have had the confidence to move forward with this if it weren't for them. Adrian Whirl couldn't be here today, but his better half is, representing him.
His boss.
And Adrian Whirl is one of those, and then Mr. David Perry. So they're not the day-to-day SUS team members, but they're definitely our friends. So that's all I have. Any questions for me?
What's the projected cost after it's finished, desch the building, not the tracks?
In the 2024 September feasibility study that was released, and there's a link to that on the PowerPoint, I'm sure Carol can send it out, and everybody has, can see it. It's $855 million, which is equal to a project, and that's everything.
No, I'm talking about the building.
Oh, I don't have the cost for that. I'm talking about the route.
Hold your bill.
Fix the same.
No, we don't know the answer to that yet. Now, part of our conversation with TA Loving was that when we conclude all of the stabilization work, part of their, part of their scope is to prepare a new cost estimate. After we have, they've addressed the things that they needed to address, they're going to give us a new cost estimate for the complete rehabilitation.
Sir, they're doing the stabilization part of it?
Madam Chair, I did have a question, and that is, on your private fundraising, would you share with everyone in regards to how they can make a donation and whether or not it's tax deductible?
It is, thank you, sir. It is tax deductible because we're partnered with the DGDC, which is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). It is a tax deductible donation. You can go to, if you just Google Saving Union Station, it'll take you right to a website. There's a QR code you can scan. There's a, it's not GoFundMe, it's a Zephy. A Zephy site. Or you can just send a check to the DGDC at 116 North Center Street. Just mark on the memo that it's for Saving Union Station, and if you want to do it in honor of Charlie Gaylor, mention that as well, and we'll make sure that Rhonda and his family know that that donation was made.
Thank you.
And welcome back to North Carolina.
Thank you.
And Ms. Whirl, Doug, Mr. Peacock, thank you for all you've been doing. I'm looking forward to seeing the changes.
I know.
And I know y'all have done a lot of hard work, but just this presentation, thank you so much. And I hope to hear from you again soon with more money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, moving along to our 9:30 public hearing. Item number six is a public hearing to receive public comments on an economic development agreement between Wayne County and the Wayne County Development Alliance Incorporated to construct two 50,000-square-foot shell buildings on Lot 7A at the Park East Industrial Park. The Board of County Commissioners may choose to take action following the public hearing.
Do we have anybody sign it?
Open the public hearing?
Oh, okay. I must do that. I now open the public hearing for any comments on the economic development agreement between Wayne County and Wayne County Development Alliance to construct two 50,000-square-foot buildings on Lot 7A at the Park East Industrial Park.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up.
Okay. All right, I close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the economic development agreement between Wayne County and the Wayne County Development Alliance for the construction of two 50,000-square-foot shell buildings.
Motion on the floor, Commissioner Dautrich.
Okay. Thank you for that vote. I would need to seek approval of the consent agenda now, Madam Chair.
I move.
Commissioner Gurley.
Thank you for that. Moving along to new business, item number 16 is a policy proposal on accrued leave conversion for supplemental service credit towards retiree health benefits eligibility. Got our HR director to come up. Thank you, sir.
Morning.
All right. So I wanted to, I call this a bridge of retirement because that's a mouthful. But as you know, the county's retiree health insurance benefit applies only to employees hired before July 1st of 2009, and that's only once they reach 25 years of service. The policy that I'm proposing allows them to convert, those employees, to convert their own unused vacation or sick leave into up to two years of service credit, helping them meet the 25-year timeline. It costs the county nothing beyond what's already been earned, but it provides a tremendous morale boost to loyal employees who have wisely managed their time over the years. This proposal gives those covered by the pre-2009 policy some flexibility in planning their retirement, especially those remaining on board primarily to meet the 25-year mark. I feel that it's a fair and balanced, fiscally neutral policy and reflects the kind of prudent policies that we already offer. And you guys have before you the highlights of the policy, as well as the official verbiage at the bottom. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
Questions?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the accrued leave conversion for supplemental service credit toward retiree health benefit eligibility or bridge, as our HR director referred to.
Gurley made the motion. Gurley made the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, thank you, sir. I'll move along to number 17. It's a discussion of requests from the Wayne County Board of Education to purchase 56 acres of land adjoining a Brogdon Primary School. Board of Commissioners may take action following this discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into recess.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go in recess.
You can, if you just want to recess it, Madam Chair, you can. We just need a time certain that we're going to reconvene.
Okay.
Would 10:30 be appropriate?
Or before 10:30.
10:30, okay. And then you can just recess.
We're going to recess until 10:30.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion please.
Okay.
I move that we approve the purchase of 56 acres of land adjoining Brogdon Primary School as presented to us by the Wayne County Board of Education.
We have a motion on the floor, by Commissioner Herron. Pass to you, Dana Smith.
All right, thank you for that note.
Thank you, Dr. Richard, coming in today.
That's a big move.
Well, and I'd just like to say if I may.
Up front please.
We, Board of Education, on behalf of our board and myself, I'd like to say we just appreciate the commissioners and their support of our school system. We think this is really the start of a great era of friendship and working relationship between both groups. We appreciate immensely additional investment of funds for our supplement for our teachers, additional investment in safety and security for our campuses, and now for the future of infrastructure for our school district. So, again, thank each of you for your support and grateful for that relationship.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Richard.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I put in a word here. Now that has been decided upon, we are encouraging the school system to immediately begin the process of employing an architect so that we have a design shovel-ready project or application for a needs-based grant next September and October. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Richard, as I said at the end of the meeting the other day, I've been on this board 13 years. And when I came on it, the school board and the county commissioners didn't speak to each other. Oh, that, I mean, and this was a different board from what you've got now. They'd say, "Give me my check and give me my money and leave me alone." And we've been working to get it where these two boards can sit down and talk for a long time. I mean, we've, I mean, because I've been here 13 years and this is as close as it has ever been, and I am proud of both boards.
My sentiments exactly. Thank you. And thank your board too for being in consideration with us, working through our questions and needing answers and everything. And I think we've got a good project going and I think it's going to be very successful for the people of the Brogdon community. Was somebody saying something here?
Do we have a closed session yet?
We do, after all the reports.
We go through our committee reports, county managers' report. Only thing I'll add is like to congratulate those that receive their employee anniversary pins. I always like to encourage our employees to come receive them. I think it's a great accomplishment and my compliments and congratulations go out to those that receive those anniversary pins. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We go through your commissioners' committee reports.
All righty. Commissioner Druckey.
No comment.
Commissioner Acock.
I just, I just wanted to thank all of our county employees because apparently more know that I'm having some health issues than I thought I did, but how kind and helpful they've been to me is so, very, very humbling to know that we've got, we've got some good employees. And some of them I don't even know, but it's very humbling to see that, you know, opening the door for me and helping me get in the courthouse and all, it's just, it's just, it's amazing how many good people are still out there.
Mr. Foster.
No comment.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as usual, had the opportunity to attend the ECC meeting and wages will be meeting tomorrow around lunchtime for our board meeting. Still a concern out there for the government shutdown as I think we're in day 22 now or wherever we are and what the end of October may look like with some of these government funding streams. And then looking forward next week to, I think Wayne Community College has a groundbreaking for the pine building, maybe attending that, and the Farm Bureau annual meeting coming up. So looking forward to just trying to represent us. And if you want to hear a great speech, come out to the Partnership of Children on October 3rd. I've been asked to speak at that event and it's wonderful. I'm telling you.
November 3rd?
I'll save your front row seat. October 30th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
At lunchtime at Lane Tree, it's their annual meeting. They invited me to speak and I will do my best. Of course, 12 o'clock, the lunch, and of course, obviously Partnership for Children, for those of you that may not know, does a really good job supporting our school district as well as trying to advocate for daycare, early childhood education for our children in our county. So it's a good organization if nobody has had an opportunity just to know them and what they do. So, but thank you. And I was being facetious with that, but you're all welcome to come.
Are you wearing a costume?
I might, with the Be in Halloween, I might. The bar at Christmas is coming.
They might swallow the gene.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Get you a green hat.
Yeah, a green hat.
Yeah, like a pumpkin.
Mr. Herron.
Yes, ma'am. I've asked Carol and Kayla to put up a picture on the, on the screen. This, we purchased this truck at Belfast.
This, we purchased this truck at Belfast, so I live maybe a year ago, to assist us on 795 and 42 because, you know, we run, we run probably more wrecks than we do anything total combined between EMS calls, structural fires, any other call, we run more wrecks with all the others combined total. We bought this truck, it looks like a DOT truck, like you see when you've got DOT workers working on the road. It's, it's got a attenuator on the backside of it, a message board that says move over, slow down, we've got an error board, whatever, on that digital board. This piece on the backside of it folds down and has a, it's filled with concrete. The chassis is filled with concrete. That piece on the backside of it, next to the truck, is filled with shock absorber type concrete. We bought this truck to help aid in the safety of our firemen on the scenes on these wrecks because people come by, they don't slow down, they're running 70, 80 miles an hour. That truck was probably $300,000. That truck, the other day was involved in an accident. Somebody ran into the back of it. You could see the truck up in the front. He hit the right side and hit the guardrail and come back around to see the skid marks. That truck saved a probably 800, $800,000 to $900,000 fire truck. Thank the good Lord, our two, Forrest and Rob, were not hurt. Rob went to the hospital to be checked out. Talked to him last night, said he still have a little issue with his neck where he hit, but they, Forrest saw him coming, so I don't think, I think he kind of let off the brake a little bit and alleviated some of the, some of the impact. But, you know, I've said this more as I was the chief there for 20 years. I'll take, I'll take down, I'll take a fire, I started to say a place, but I'll take a place on fire any day of the week than stand out in the middle of that, of that road. So I just, it's, it's got to move over a lot for a reason. I think the person that hit him, I think that man standing to the right over there took him to jail. So he was not hurt either. But just, you know, pay attention on the road because, you know, 90% of us in the county are volunteers and we're out there risking our lives to try to help somebody else. And when you don't pay attention, things like this right here happen or worse. Thank you, ma'am.
And follow up on that, Chris. There's more fireman, paramedic, EMS workers and law enforcement killed in wrecks than is in the whole country fighting fire. There's more, there's more killed doing other than fighting fire. There's some of the, like your highway patrol, your police, EMS, your firefighters, there's actually more of them killed doing this than...
We can come to your control in a fire, we can't control somebody else when they're looking at their phone or, or not paying attention or whatever else involves. Anyway, I just want to bring that up. Thank the good Lord that our boys are not hurt and just please pay attention.
You, Commissioner. That's a good thing. I think sometimes they speed up when they see something like that.
Speaking of that bar.
Yes.
The road that I live on, the speed limit had been 55 since the house was built in 1952. They come along and put up 45 mile an hour speed limits and now they're running 65. I mean, it's, it's crazy.
And I read it exactly too. Used to, I didn't ever see any traffic on, but now it's a different story. On October 8th, I went to Washington DC with Henry Smith, friends of Seymour, and Mayor Gaylord, visited Senator Budd about friends of Seymour and the L-15E and everything. And I want to thank Senator Budd for taking the time. He gave us 30 minutes to discuss what we would like to see here in Wayne County in the protection of Seymour Johnson. Also, thank you for being on Partnership for Children. It is a very important, important board, you know, our kids and everything. And also, I want to thank our employees on their time spent here in Wayne County. That just shows that it's a good place to work. And I want to thank them for taking this, their time and continuing to work here for us because it costs us a lot to train new employees and to be able to retain employees. That says a lot for the county as well. And thank y'all for what y'all do to help make that happen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going. Going, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Got a motion.
And that would be to consult with your attorney to retain attorney-client privilege.
10 here. All right.
Thank you, Dr. Richard, for coming.
Mr. Goddard, did yours pop up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're at a closed session. Is there anything else before our adjournment?
Nothing.